All right, let's restart. So now that we have the right paperwork, we will go back to the first item, which is PZC 2024-01, map amendment and variations for a 10-unit townhome project at 946 Beloit. May I have the motion to open and enter the packet into record?
I'll make a motion to open the packet.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. I believe I'm on the record of who I am, so I'll just start into the presentation. Introducing the development team, Michael Lateruder, who is here today. His company is L. Development, and specifically on this project, it's 946 Beloit LLC. The engineering and environmental firm is Landmark Engineering. The traffic consultant is Fish Transportation. You have a copy of their report, but I can expand on it a little more. And architecture and approvals is on me, JCSA Chicago. And I thought that, given the nature of this development, that I'd start with a small narrative. And I'm going to acknowledge right now, because I lived across Harlem from here for 20 years, and we knew of Ed's Way as a place to shop locally. And I'm not using the term beloved loosely. I think everybody loves this. And to explain how we got here, I'm going to invite David King to give us a brief narrative about the purchase and sale of the property. I think that's salient to how we, before we move forward.
Good evening. David King, President of David King &amp; Associates, a commercial real estate firm based in Oak Park. Just celebrated our 30 years a couple of months ago. And I've been a Forest Park resident now 38 years. I gotta go back and pull up my deed to find out when I came to town. So we've been here a little while. On one hand, this is a sad day, that we're standing up here talking about Ed's Way closing. On the other hand, I'm gonna say it's an exciting day once you see this project that's gonna be unveiled. I could not be more excited, at least being on the front ends of trying to put this together. And you already stole my line, sad about our beloved Ed's Way. The closure of Ed's Way has been in the works for a long time. I was approached by the Nobby family who own Ed's Way, of course, back in fall of 2019, and inquired, asked, Dave, can you help us sell the building and help us sell the business? Why? And they're a little bit younger back then, but they're beyond ready for retirement. They're beyond ready for retirement. Ed is now 84. Mike is 66. I learned at a very young age, never discuss a woman's age, so we're not gonna talk about how old Karen is, but they're ready for retirement. And, you know, the grocery business, it's a physically demanding... You know, an 84 Ed still shakes like a 30-year-old. You know, it's a physically demanding business. They're tired. They're closing the store. So we started to work on it, and then COVID comes along. Okay. This has not happened for a little while. We regrouped and then went back at it, starting in '22. So I was engaged as their real estate broker and advisor to guide them through this process. The sale of the business, you know, I won't say it was a long shot, but it was a long shot. Bottom line is these independent grocery stores are barely breaking even. Ed's Way, for the last five years, has barely paid its bills. It's the nature of life in the grocery store business. So of course, we marketed to other grocery stores. You know, I pitched Carnival in Oak Park. I actually sold them that building. Oak Park Avenue was pants 10 years ago, and talked to some other independents. But the reality is, some are doing better than Ed's Ways, but nobody is in a position where they're running out to open up a new store. It's just the world we live in, you know? So we had some lookers, but once we started getting to the financials, we're done. No further interest. We're done. Bottom line is, it is beyond impossible to backfill this location for another independent grocery store. Ed's Way is closing. And it's horrible, but it's called life, you know? Things do change. We, of course, the second marketing strategy was to market to the other commercial uses that are allowed in B1. I'm not gonna read them all, but some of them are quite interesting. We could put a bank, a bakery, a business or a commercial school, food catering. Oh, we could put a mortuary there. We could put a post office, professional service office, a restaurant, radio, TV, radio or TV repair shop, a locksmith or upholstery shop. Those are all allowed to go into that building as a matter of right under B1 zoning. But there's two issues. One, it's a 9,000-square-foot building. It's a fairly large building for the businesses that are allowed in that zoning. But the real problem is it's smack dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood. If you were gonna open up one of those businesses, and there's a few more on that list, you're gonna be looking at Roosevelt Road, you're gonna be looking at Harlem Avenue, you're gonna be looking at all sorts, Madison, Serra Mac Road. You're not looking at the corner of Beloit and Harvard. It's a residential site. It's not a commercial real estate location. So the site doesn't work for a grocery store. It doesn't work for other commercial uses that are allowed. We basically have a white elephant commercial building in 100% residential neighborhood. And quite candidly, it's not what I would also call the most handsome of buildings. There's no setbacks into it. It's directly on the lot line. And that is how they built the buildings back in the day. Directly across the street, there's a little two-story. You can clearly see there was a corner store there, built right on the lot line. No setbacks, as current codes require. There's no green space, well, other than an occasional weed maybe popping up in the parking lot. So the third methodology to market this property was obviously for residential redevelopment, which is why we're here tonight. I mean, I've been working on this for a little while, north of four years. I've been paying attention to Beloit, and even though we don't sell houses, you'd be the wrong person. They'll never hire me to sell a house. I'll backtrack. Beloit Avenue, you know, what a cool deal with the holiday lights this year. This is phenomenal. But underneath, what's interesting, it's also becoming a high-end residential street. At 824 Beloit, they rebuilt the house, ground up a black little two-story. Small as a postage stamp. I couldn't tell you what size it is. It sold last year for $674,000 on Beloit. Across the street, they entered on Beloit, they've been working on it two or three years. Little two-story gray brick, just immediately one house off of Beloit. They just put that on the market for $780,000. Beloit is becoming like some cool street for residential. And I would suggest to you that the project that... Carrie's going, "Yeah." It is, play it or not. And I would suggest the project that they're gonna present tonight is a continuation of already what is happening on Beloit.
Thank you, David. And thank you for the deep intro on the seller. So yes, David was marketing the property. Another Realtor got us together, and it was clear that... And David will be the first to tell you that we don't always agree on everything. But we definitely agree on the B1 district. It tends to be, you'll see on the zoning map, it's literally a little island surrounded by R3 and R2. So we researched that, got that out of the way, and then realized that the townhouse market is very strong. Again, David noted that, and specifically on this street. It's the folks that are not happy to pay for $750,000, $800,000 for a townhome in Oak Park, they realize, oh, I could live in Forest Park for less money and a little bit less taxes. Forest Park's catching up a bit. And so we developed the site plan. I worked with Michael Lateruder, the developer. And the first site plan, I'll tell you, was not as good as the site plan we ended up with. We'll talk about that a little later. But in introduction and further talking about Michael and his companies, we have had a, I think it's a five- or 10-year relationship. It's been a while. We've done several developments together. Most recently, we've done Pearson Homes in Chicago, and Bishop Townhomes have a few photographs. Now, these are not professional photos. This is somebody from my staff going out there and taking... But the gray block there, that's actually three, two buildings. A two-flat and a four-flat, total of six units. You can see it a little better there. Very successful, sold. These were for-sale products. You know, very tall ceilings. We had one at 11 foot at that. Very grand spaces. And then we also did Bishop Townhomes, which have, you'll see, they have, at least in site plan, they have similarities to the plans you'll see tonight. I can't remember. It's been a while for the address, but they're on Bishop Street in Chicago. You can see they're organized around a courtyard. Same thing, three-story development, some plug-in bays and entrances on the ground floor with garages in the back. There's more photos of that. Again, the process. We're here at the Plan Commission and onward to the Village Council, depending on how you folks see this development and vote tonight. The data. This lot is 125 by 124 feet deep. So it's a virtual square, just off by one foot. And so 15,500 square feet is the area, or 0.355 acres. Again, very meaningful, looking at the engineering of this site. The current zoning is B1. David gave you a list of some of those allowed uses. And to highlight that a little bit, an allowed use would mean a developer or a business owner could come in and just say, I want a building permit. And as long as the building permit requirements were met, there's no notice to neighbors, there's no public hearings. It just gets done, and it could get done with zero lot lines. In other words, you could go, there's no setback requirements in a B1 zone. We're proposing 10 townhomes with setbacks, total of 20 parking spaces, two per garage. And this is, I'm hoping I can play Vanna again. I won't talk too much here, but I will tell you, this mustard-looking color, I'll speak up. The mustard-looking color is the R3, which we're looking to do a map amendment to include that. This pinkish color here is the B1 zone. You can see R3 and B1, the pink color. So that's what we're hoping to do. It avoids any thinking about spot zoning, because literally, it's surrounded by, it's adjacent by R3, with the exception of the yellow color, R2, across the alley to the east. And this is the site plan that we came up with. The entry for the garages is through the drive, which comes off the alley. And then you enter this site plan, each townhome there. Five on the north, five on the south, so five townhomes would face north, five townhomes would face south. The drive ends in a landscaping buffer, which is really a place where, during the kinds of snows that we've been having, they move the snow to the end there. And that's all by private maintenance company. The, I'm very familiar with this design. If I could take you to six or seven of them within a 10-minute drive. They are very successful. There's some straight down, two of them, straight down Roosevelt Road. On South Boulevard, there's, oh my, seven or eight, six, six developments similar to this. It's been nicknamed the she's doughnut. I'm not sure why, but local paper thought that was a good crack, because it behaves like a doughnut. Sometimes the end units come together. But in terms of functionality, if you're walking or have a guest coming, they would come in either the north or south. These are the pedestrian ways here, and you'd enter there on the north side, on the south side. This is, these two are unique. They have their own block off of Beloit, and then the other homes come in here. These are landscaped areas here, and a big landscape slot here. Currently, the building sits here. It's 75 feet here, and then comes across, the lot line comes across there. It occupies, I think, about 78, under roof, about 78% of the building. I have it in notes here, if you want me to be more specific. And then the rest is parking lot. So as David said, there's zero green space, zero permeability. So every drop of rain that hits that eventually goes for sewer treatment. And that's not an ideal thing. When you're planning developments, you want as much water to get into the ground, permeate down, and re-feed the aquifers. This will do that by adding 28% more green space than is what's currently there. Thought I'd highlight that. We get to that data point a little more. And the one improvement I have to give credit to. When we first designed this, we had the driveway this way. So you would come in through a new curb cut on Harvard, and then the homes would be this way. Michael took a look at it and said, no, we're gonna spin it around, since it's basically a square, so that the traffic goes in the alley, and you don't have homes facing an alley, right? With it turned the other way, you'd actually have homes, which has been done. We've done it in Oak Park three or four times. It's not ideal, but that's how we came out of the gate. I think this is a far better plan. I'm gonna move along here. The units, I won't get too deep into it, but you see they have the garage there coming in off the driveway, a family room on the ground floor. And then on the second floor, you have great room, dining, breakfast, powder room. This is where the family generally lives. There are balconies, like the last one. These balconies overhang the court, the driving court. So they're not looking into neighbors like the last development. And then on the top floor, you have three bedrooms, primary suite with its own unsuite, the washer-dryers up on that floor, and two bedrooms. We, you know, when we move from here to working drawings, we'll tweak this a little more. The marketing staff for the developer and I will tweak it a little more, but it'd generally be this, three bedrooms, living, family room on the ground floor. This is the view on the north and south. So this would be facing the neighbor to the north and Harvard. Again, for the architects in the room, I just learned you were an architect. You know, it's a combination of hardy panels and hardy siding. So it's a fairly indestructible exterior. It certainly is low on the maintenance side. And, you know, the key to this is good installation. And so I'm happy that I have a history with Michael and his crew, so we'll stay on that. This is the west view, so this is what you would see on Beloit. Again, the same pattern, and you can see the overhanging balconies over the drive there and the landscaping that we have planned as a buffer. This is the inner courtyard. You only get to see it in diagonal views as you're walking along or driving along. You can see the bedrooms on the top floor, living area on the second floor, and garages on the first floor. They all have lighting there, so lighting is taken care of by lighting that's on the building. This is the view east, and this is the view from the alley. We have a landscape plan. Again, we're going to work with Steve and his staff on adjusting this if it's necessary. The request. Yes?
What is the construction of the driveway between the units? Is that concrete?
That's what we're planning, yes.
Any consideration for something to let the water go down?
More expensive?
Yes.
Give me a recommendation.
Bricks, where the water can drain down to the aquifers.
Let me, if you don't mind, and when I'm through the presentation, if I can consult with my client, and we can have an answer for you.
Thank you.
I would thought you would've come up with that.
I did. It's on my giant list.
Okay. Good, good. Architects, we get in each other's brains, and it's not a good thing. So the requests. We're clearly asking for a map amendment going from a B1 to an R3, reducing the front yard from 20 feet to 10 feet. So that, this is on Beloit, so we're asking for 50% reduction on that. The rear yard is 25 feet to 9.5 feet. The reasons for those two are just the dimensions of a typical townhome as you march along there. And the other thing is, it's not a single-family. I think this, the 20 feet and the 25 feet are things that you would find as reasonable setbacks in a single-family home district. It's here in an R3, so we're asking for relief for that. We're also asking for relief of the square footage of lot area. So the zoning ordinance says that if you're planning this, it requires 2,000 square feet of land for each unit. We are at 1556. So we're asking for relief on that. I've got to tell you, historically, in some of the, except for the last site, the other sites we've done in town and also in Oak Park, the 2,000 square foot per unit is, my opinion, is it's a little onerous. It, you know, for the highest density classification that Forest Park has, and Steve's staring at me. It's just, it's a fact of what's there in the code. I, if you had an R4, it would look more like 1556. That's just my experience around town. And then the last request is for lot coverage. That's how much building you can put on the site. The R3 says that it should be 40% maximum, and we're asking for 47. So there's, we're asking for the 7% additional for lot coverage. Currently, the lot is, as I mentioned before, 78% covered. Let's leave aside whether there's a parking lot or not. This is the roof footprint of the current building is around 70%. So we're going to dial that back with the proposed development. Dial it back, meaning reduce the building footprint. Madam Chair, I can go on this, but it's all in writing. So again, closing with the highest, I firmly believe, and I think David confirmed it, that this proposal is the highest and best use for this. It brings into town tax benefits. If you want, we could deliver documents to you citing the tax differential. But my phone is... Thank you for indulging me, but the... The current taxes are $45,000 about, is what David just mentioned. My numbers are coming out at $1.2 million for, that's 600,000 times 10 times .2. That's the, that is the gross tax revenue for this development. It tends to spike up high and then comes down. Let me see if that makes sense. No, it is not. That's... It's 600... It's 120,000.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Well, I thought I could sell your house. 120,000. So if you take 120,000 minus... That's an additional $75,000 a year to gross taxes. That does not go directly to Forest Park. Forest Park gets about 22% of that. Cook County gets another share, and Mosquito District and all that other stuff. So I'm going to put this out there. Because I'm in the community, I hear that one of the community comments is, why 10 units? And I thought I'd put it out there, tell you that we're aware of it, and tell you how we see the same thing that you're seeing. So it's fundamentally a density question. It's why 10 versus four, five, six, eight? And it comes down to how a developer sees a development. And my gray hair will tell you, I've been working with these folks, worked with Michael. They share their numbers. I share our numbers. And it comes down to the price of the land and development risk. So if the price of the land were substantially lower than what the purchase price is, that changes the game. That tells the developer, well, I can crank back, because I know I have a ceiling in selling these homes. But the ceiling stays the same, but if the price of the land is less, you can work with lower density. In this case, the price of the land is pretty much a premium. And, you know, when you take the purchase price and divide it by 10, developers' general rule is 30,000 a door, or 30,000 a unit. That's somewhere wrong. I don't know if I can say this, but it's a far cry from what the land is valued at today. And the second reason for the number 10 is development risk. Here's a private individual coming in, purchasing the land with private funds, no relief from the village in terms of tip financing or anything like that. So that, there's a formula that goes in. It says, based on, you know, what we think we can sell these for, you know? And at the end of the day, nobody's making a million dollars on this. Just, I know you'll probably have to take my word for it, but it's a, it's a fact. No one's gonna walk away with this. There's several risks. But when you get done with that, that conversation, then you look at, you know, the question, why 10? What kind of impact, my responsibility, what kind of impact do 10 townhomes do on a site like this? So you have building height, you know, bulk. Bulk can impact the community. So in terms of building height, this is, I think the last time I saw the height ordinance on this was 60, 60 feet. And we're nowhere near that height. The height is 32 feet for this property, for this development. The setbacks on the north and south are compliant. As David pointed out, the setback on the south is far greater than what's required, and the setback on the north is also far less. Each one of them are five feet, and we're giving somewhere around 15 or 16 feet. So we're being more compliant thereby reducing the impact to the community. The other is green space. Now, green space is not a measurement in the zoning ordinance, but it is an impact to the community. So this will bring an additional 28% of the lot area as green space and act as that percolation element that is not here. So I'm happy to answer more questions around this, but I don't want to muddle it. But I did want to address it because I heard it. I heard it on, from several folks. There's a big thing of former Oak Parkers moving into Forest Park. And they say, John, what the heck? So I thought we'd address it. Maybe I haven't done it fully. I'm happy to answer more questions on it.
Okay, let me open this up to the commissioners first. Scott, I have no doubt that you have a list of questions. So I'm going to start on the left, go down the line. And when we're done with our questions, we'll open up for public comment. I also know there were some written comments as well. Ryan?
I know you've addressed it a little bit, John, but have you, 10 units is high density. Have you considered single-family homes? I know the answer to this, but...
Yeah, you know, through the slides, single-family homes were one of the first ones that we came out with. We even looked at duplex homes, a bigger footprint. I'll tell you, the reason why I took the sketch and set it off to the side was I couldn't get vehicle access to these folks. You know, they either have to behave coming in off the alley, or coming in off Beloit, or the other way around. Either way, with the driveway requirement of a minimum of 16 feet, I wasn't getting any traction on that. The unit count was, I think my last sketch was probably five, five units.
But there's five lots of record? Five single-family homes?
I don't think so. I think the 125 would divide into, even if you...
25-foot lot?
Yeah. If you did 25-foot lots, you'd have five. I was going with the 50-foot, or we'd have to come in for the same kind of variance. And even then, Mr. Commissioner, I couldn't get, even at five, I couldn't safely get into those garages. So it really, when I'm not able to do that, I'm aware of what developers look at. That would, that would scare Nutley family if a developer came up, because the offering would be very low.
What kind of fencing? I see there's a fence, but I don't know what kind of fence that is around the property.
It's a wood fence, six-foot-high wood fence.
On the north side?
Yes, that's correct.
There's only a fence on the north side only? Because that's where the neighbors?
Yes, yes, that's correct. We have some possible metal gates and stuff, but we were holding off on that until we talked to the Director of Public Safety.
Karen? Paul?
If Scott doesn't cover it, I will, I may come back, but I think I'm good for now.
Scott?
I'm going to start with them. So I noticed that you presented a few other examples of projects that were built recently by the developer. One of them that looked similar to this was an all-brick, really nice brick building. We, David King, talked about high-end, up-and-coming Beloit, but we're getting fiber cement siding. Can you talk about that?
Yeah. Just jotting down some notes here. So one of the things that affects developers perform is the cost of construction, which has been nuts. I actually was a general contractor, and four of the townhome developments that I mentioned, I actually built. So I know my way around construction budgets. And masonry is, Bishop was, when was it, 2006 or '08? I think, I think so, 2006 or '08. The world wasn't crazy. Well, it was crazy for a different reason, but it wasn't about construction. You could get reasonable construction costs somewhere around, you know, $120 a square foot. That number is history. It never, it won't come back. And one of the drivers is masonry. So we decided to come out of the gate with an effective product and do that. Some, so the other reason is, we were trying to emulate, or come close to the Displanes townhomes and the townhomes on Franklin. If you know where that is, is taking the slip from Circle going toward, toward the Jewel there on the south side. Those sold for, in the 400,000. And again, that's where my point comes on. It's acceptable, it's a decent product, as long as the installers do a really good job. And so you...
Yeah, I just think it misses the mark in terms of character within the, because we're talking about Displanes, that is a very different character than the single-family homes in Beloit and the all-brick school across the street.
Yes.
I also think that the west elevation is essentially, even if whatever material, it's a blank wall, it's a white wall facing the school entrance. I think there should be some development there, and some acknowledgement of what is happening at that corner, which is pretty, very active corner in terms of people utilizing it. There's a lot of Christmas displays, there's drop-offs, hundreds of kids every day. I don't think this speaks to what is happening there. It's a very active corner.
I hear your point. I may need to counsel with my client.
Sure. It's just something I was thinking about. My daughter goes to school there, across the street, so you may not be able to answer this question, but I wanted to bring it up in a public forum. Can you, do you have any understanding about the conditions during construction, particularly, my concern would be road, road blockages?
Yeah, that's a very interesting point, because I just mentioned, I did that for a living for five or six years. So as part of our permit requirement, we would need to submit to Steve and his staff a staging diagram that says we're going to have fence around here, here's gate one, gate two signage, and there, that would generally, we would ask, if it's appropriate, to actually take in the right-of-way, so that, you know, machines that are operating around the future building would stay within that fence line. I think that's, I don't know what Steve's thoughts, or his staff's, or engineering's thoughts, but I would push hard for that, so that while it's under construction, all of the materials and things are inside of that thing. That's, that's number one thing that, because we're aware, there's a school there, and there's a lot of young activity coming and going.
That's the big thing as well. I'd say, besides the road stoppages, it would be a safety issue that I would just want to... With any construction, just something I want to acknowledge and say aloud in a public forum.
The only time, even if that were approved by Steve's staff, the only time we would need to go out of that envelope, that chain-link envelope, is for water and sewer hookups. And I noted the water is on the east side, which makes it easy, you don't have to go across the street, which says that sewer is actually on the opposite side. They always trade sides. But that would be temporary or in short-lived, and, you know, we'd have to sign flaggers because of traffic and pedestrians there. We'd want ultra-safety on that. And that is another thing that Steve and his staff would need to approve.
Great. I was looking through the traffic study, thank you for sharing that. It does, and I believe that it accurately portrays the reduced amount of traffic, because it's townhomes and not a big parking lot for people grocery shopping. But I did want to ask the question if there had been any thought about two things. One is deliveries, which will now be happening, parking on Beloit, again, across the street where the school drop-off is, which does not happen today. And if there would be, and I didn't see it in the study, but I had to scan it, if there was an increase in overnight parking, that would, again, take away parking from people that are trying to drop off their kids.
Yeah, two good points. And if I can go back to the site plan. This is something that we talked about with Steve and the developer. Again, I'm a white politician. We are talking about expanding this to a temporary parking zone for the Amazons of the world, the Baxes, that temporarily park there and then deliver their packages out the front. So that one, it wasn't acknowledged by the traffic consultant, but it's something that, a dialogue that we're already working on. In terms of the, you know, the guest parking, if you will, we have no provision for it. We're confident that these folks will manage it. Like, you know, when, if you live in a single-family, you have your two cars in the garage, an overnight guest is going to have to park in the street. That's just, that's a reality with developments like this. I think the last development was very unique in the fact that we could squeeze that one guest spot in the back.
This may not be a question for you, but I'd be wondering if there'd be a way to put signage up to prevent overnight parking or guest parking during school drop-off hours. This is something maybe we could...
I think that that's a condition that we could work with, with Steve and his staff.
Okay. I'm going to try to keep going quickly. The plumbing sewer, I didn't see the impact study, and the, it's great that there's more permeable materials on the site, and I agree, if the driveway was permeable pavers, like I've seen in other similar townhomes, I think that would be even better. But there is a, I would imagine, there'd be an increase in, so there's a reduction from the site, but there's an increase in plumbing being used. There's more toilets, for sure, there's more, there's no showers in Ed's Way. So is, has, can you speak to, since I haven't seen this study, can you speak to what study has been done regarding that?
Yeah, it was a fundamental study by Landmark that took a look at the size of the water and sewer service on-site, using the village's GIS system that locates, you know, the size and location of those services, and they found it to be adequate. That's a, that's an early goal, goalpost for us, because you don't want to get in there and say, oh, man, we've got to pay for upgrading water main or sewer main. So that hurdle has been crossed. But the actual final study, the detailed study, comes with the final engineering. And I wanted to talk a little about that, and hopefully I'm not getting too nerdy, but some municipalities require preliminary engineering and then final engineering. That's not an option here. But, so we have to do the full engineering, which is a very costly item, and to have that done and risk nonapproval, or sometimes variation on the approval. It's typical for a developer to hold off until the plans are approved, then we send them to them. And it's got to meet the village's standard. This isn't something that, you know, you put up in, like an architect, it is what it is, because that's what I'm designing. This actually gets final approval from the engineering staff here in town, so...
Regarding the, I don't know if it's front, the Beloit setback, do you know where we are in relation to the other residential homes? Again, I understand this is not a single-family home, however, it is three stories tall, so it's much larger, which to me would mean we would actually have, we would maintain, it would be better, beneficial to maintain that setback. Do you know where you are, that would be on the left side, in relation to adjacent homes?
Yeah. I don't have a measurement, but I've got to tell you, it varies from 15 feet to 18 feet. The R3 code says 20, but those homes are at 20 feet, so it's somewhere between 15 and 18 feet. There is one that's fairly close. I was looking for a Google map here, and I don't have one. There's 13, yeah, it's pretty close.
And there's no way, I'm assuming it's returning ready, so that you can push toward, everything towards the alley, so you wouldn't lose, I understand you don't want to lose a townhome?
So pushing it, the building east is an interesting thought. You see those blue triangles here? We have to be careful on those, because the closer the building comes here, we have to maintain this nine-foot side angle.
Right.
So I guess that's a long way of saying we could entertain that, talk to my client, talk to Steve and the engineering. It might be able to go from 10...
It's nine foot six now, it's 10 foot on this, my point being, there's no benefit to having nine foot six in landscaping on an alley side.
Understood.
So I think if we could give that to the street...
Let me talk to my point first.
Yeah, I don't expect answers right now, I just think it's, I'm going to make a note of it.
It's a clever point, though.
And then my last question.
Can I take you back on that a little bit? It's actually, my daughter lives right across the alley from this, so I'm intimately aware of this. It's actually pretty hard for them to come out of the garage. If we push that back more, it's just going to put more burden on, not just my daughter, but some of the other neighbors.
I think that is, the site plan says 16-foot alley. So in terms of navigating alleys, on a 16-foot alley, you definitely want, you know, a four-foot setback on each side. Here, again, I don't know the setback to the folks on the east, but, so I wouldn't take the whole nine foot six. I mean, five foot, five foot six would be something...
Understood. Yeah, I'm not expecting that, I just think, and, I mean, it's not, I'm not suggesting reducing the alleys with, I'm just suggesting moving the buildings so there's a little more streetscape.
That's a good point. I'm looking at my client, and we're thinking, what you're thinking, that nine foot six of landscaping is not helping the world. Maybe there's a different type of pavement we can put in, you know, that river gravel or something that's permeable, but still allows, you know, folks that live on the other side to cheat and get on that.
I think it's just worth exploration, and it may give you a little more room to back up on that sort of slight backup area on the Beloit side. Last question, the, your R3, just to say it aloud, that means it's not apartments, it's, these are permanent, meant to be permanent homes?
Oh, yeah. These are for-sale townhomes. Correct.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? Paul, did you have any else? Okay. Then let's move to public comments, and we're going to start with items that have been written in.
I have four public comments to read. The first one is from Anraft.
Microphone.
Oh, good. The first one is from Anraft. It says, please do not rezone this property to high density. We don't need more condos, too many already. This location has been zoned this way for over 50 years. There is no hardship to the property owner. He knew what he was getting when he purchased the commercial property. This, this is store provides jobs to our community and supports the local community needs. Our town slogan is small-town charm. The corner store is exactly why people like this town. Please keep Ed's Way. Nora. The second statement is from Kimberly Adami, A-D-A-M-I. Good afternoon, Rachel, Steve, and Commissioners. Canceling one meeting due to dangerous weather conditions while you keep another meeting on the schedule seems very odd. I know many of my neighbors are concerned about this new development and are planning to attend this meeting, but might change their minds due to the dangerous cold. We all deserve to have the opportunity to see how this plays out. The fact that Forest Park schools are closing tomorrow, this was written on the 15th... The fact that Forest Park schools are closing tomorrow, this was written on the 15th, are closing tomorrow due to the weather and other events being rescheduled makes me hope that the village will reconsider holding this meeting or at least give the neighbors the opportunity, an opportunity to participate via Zoom. The safety of the residents, the staff and volunteers who serve on this board should be top priority. Thank you for your time. Kimberly Adami, A-D-A-M-I dash Hasegawa, H-A-S-E-G-A-W-A. This last one is a letter from Abby Hansen, H-A-N-S-E-N. It's addressed to Vanessa Morris, Village Clerk, Village of Forest Park. It was sent Monday. To whom it may concern, I am writing today in regard to the rezoning process for the parcel of land that it currently occupied by Ed's Way. Do not give developers carte blanche to do as they please to our town. While I recognize that the Ed's Way Grocery Store may cease to exist, I implore the town officials to protect the walkability of our town and explore creative situations when rezonings. Ask yourselves, what does more housing bring to our town? As I understand it, our town could potentially lose out on tax money when converting from commercial to residential. Developing a commercially zoned parcel into housing would be a detriment to our community. I do not live in that part of town, but I recognize that the loss of that retail parcel would impact how other homeowners closer to that property view their relationship to, value of and desirability of their immediate community. Please protect our residents' access to convenient food and household essentials. Thank you, Abby. Thank you, Abby Hansen, Forest Park resident. The final one is a comment from Erin Polonsik. And that's P-O, it's Erin, E-R-I-N, P-O-L-O-N-C-S-I-K, 934 Beloit. This is dated, she's from 934 Beloit. This is dated 8/1/2024. Salutations, Forest Park Village Hall. I'm writing to express concern over rezoning of my directly neighboring lot, Ed's Way. Yep, I live right next door. When I first bought my home, I didn't anticipate loving that grocery store so much. I've come to appreciate it for last minute snacks for my classroom, quick runs when I forget an item in a recipe, and more recently, an easy shopping trip with a new baby. I'm thankful for many Ed's Way memories and conveniences and which the whole staff best wishes on their new endeavors as well as a happy retirement. But should it be rezoned? No. There are strong reasons 10 townhomes are detrimental to Forest Park, both personal as well as for the whole village. One, flooding. My basement, as well as those of my Glockmates, already floods regularly. Adding this density would compound the problem. Two, sewer system. In a village where we are advised to skip flushing when it's storming, adding 10 townhomes in this space would severely strain the already struggling sewer system. Three, lack of care. The builder, Michael, doesn't live in this community. His care and concern for Forest Park constituents would be zero. He cares only about making money rather than the value of our community. Four, inexperience. Michael, according to my research, is new to the real estate business. Do we want an inexperienced business person tackling this project in our backyard? Five, parking. For those without a garage, parking in our area is a struggle. Renters regularly post unsuccessful queries for parking on Facebook. Village lots don't provide enough. The density of 10 homes would compound this problem. Six, students. The project is directly across the street from a school. I've taught middle school for 20 years. I promise that the construction noise will be a serious distraction for students during school time. For a district already struggling with standardized test performance and 26% chronic absenteeism, distractions are hardly needed. Believe me, excuse me, teachers have enough on their plates. Extensive construction, its noise and how it affects students shouldn't be another thing they have to worry about. Seven, danger. This area is highly trafficked by pedestrians, commuters walking to the Blue Line, park district visitors in the summer, dog walkers, students going to and from school, runners. A densely populated construction site is not safe for our residents. Eight, community needs. What does our community need to grow? Has that been assessed? No. What would help bring positive attention to our village? What need would towns, townhomes support? Nine, rats. Forest Park already struggles with rats. Putting 10 townhomes in that tiny space would intensify the rodent problem. Excuse me. Ten, green space. 10 townhomes would negate any opportunity for sunlight and green space. For example, our neighbors, Rob and John, have worked hard to create beautiful flowerbeds. I grow an extensive vegetable garden each spring. This development would ruin those efforts. Eleven, congestion. 10 townhomes would bring unneeded traffic and parking congestion to this intersection and alley. Twelve, value. What would this development do for the surrounding home values? According to research, it could lower home values on surrounding blocks. That is hardly fair. A different sort of development might have more potential to raise home values while also providing more value to residents. Thirteen, blight. The construction site and its result would be a blight on our neighborhood. Dirt and dust, porta potties on the lawn, constant trucks and noise, construction debris, extensive noise. Fourteen, opportunity. The rezoned space would only benefit those who moved there. Ed's Way, on the other hand, benefited the entire village and those around us. Jobs, groceries for citizens, donations for the food pantry in school. 946 Beloit should be a space that all can utilize, not just a select few. What that space could be needs to be gauged by the community, not an experienced developer. Thank you for your time. Erin Pelosi. Pelosik.
Thank you for reading that. Okay. We're now ready for public comment. Again, if you want to speak, I'm gonna ask you to line up at the microphone. We have up to three minutes. If you're saying what the person in front of you or the person in front of them said, please just say, I want to reiterate what John, Mary, et cetera said, just for the sake of time.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Alfano. I live on Beloit and am going to be a new neighbor to these potential residents. Sorry. I understand that the property has been listed for a number of years with very few potential buyers coming to, to look at this property. I also recognize that this can allow people who want to stay in the community to, but can no longer maintain a single family home, a place that they could stay in our community while freeing up single family homes in the surrounding neighborhood for families. This, but however, a mutually beneficial development needs to happen. They are asking for exceeding zoning regulations, so we should be met with exceeding the community's expectations. Two things that could be doing that is, one, a storm water management plan that is more in line with what Chicago requires of their developments. I know permeable pavers were already brought up. If we feel that that is not a cost option for the project, maybe a storm trap or something like that could be incorporated to contain the majority of the water until the system can recover. The other option that I've been hearing a lot, perusing Facebook, of course, is multi-use development. We are losing a retail space. I don't know if a retail space can be incorporated into the development, but that would be a nice, you know, middle ground where we still have a community retail space in our, in our surrounding neighborhood while getting the additional housing. Finally, David King mentioned that this is a high end residential street. That shows the support that residents with disposable income are moving into the community. That would also bode well for a retail business if we were to maybe pitch pivot to a multi-use development. Finally, I want to make a clarification. 25 by 125 would make five single family home lots, which would match the overall aesthetic of the community. So five single family homes could fit comfortably on this property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is James DiMico, D apostrophe A M I C O.
And your address, James?
I'm 1029 Thomas.
Thank you.
So to open here, I wanted to throw out a stat regarding Forest Park's walk score. The average walk score is 95 in Forest Park, which is outstanding. It blows a park out of the water, blows Evanston out of the water, Berwin, Cicero, and exceeds the Chicago average. Something to keep in mind as we consider ripping another local business district or plot away from this part of town is how that affects specifically the area between Roosevelt and Harrison. According to Redfin studies, the point, a single walk score point can actually increase the value of a home compared to similar, similar to lots by $3,200. The loss of the pines, loss of the oak leaves, I mean, the loss of Ed's. We're quickly facing a dense but weirdly unblockable area all of a sudden. Now, we heard mention of it being a residential area as a reason to replace the zone entirely. And yet, for years, strong towns like ours and our neighbors were built around these interspace commercial businesses within residential areas before the sprawling suburbanization of America. Businesses mixed among residential areas is still very successfully done so across the globe. I know when I lived in Ireland, I had a pharmacy, a pub, a restaurant, all within my block, and I didn't even live within the city limits. I may be wrong here, but the proof of Ed's existence, of Takabran, of Little Red Wagon, of the length of time that the pines and the oak leaves were open, is proof that you don't need to be on Harlem Roosevelt displays in order to exist as a commercial business in this part of town. Forest Park is one of maybe those five suburbs that I mentioned earlier, that Berwin, Cicero, Park, Evanston, us, that have stayed true to that tradition of being dense, of being walkable, and having a neighborhood feel. And yet, during this obituary speech about Ed's, we jumped from utilizing the existing commercial area straight to townhomes to back up, I apologize, I forgot your name, but it seems like we skipped a step here of mixed use zoning with that commercial space on the ground floor. Now, we heard a reference to the replacing of pans with carnival and how rare that was. What we didn't hear is that in that same community, the loss of a community grocer in the villager created a vacuum that demanded Trader Joe's. What we didn't hear was the loss of Land Foods on Lake Street created a vacuum that led to the.
You've got 20 seconds.
Thank you. That led to the Target. There will be a vacuum and people deserve a walkable option. They're not going to suddenly hop in a car and head across Roosevelt and make that excursion. I urge you guys to be creative and not just settle for the first townhome that shows up here. Let's think outside the box and support our community and the walkability that we hold so dear. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Sippel, S-I-P-P-E-L. A few thoughts.
Where do you live, Jason?
I live in 815 Marego.
Thank you.
I guess in terms of the keeping the commercial zoning as it is, you know, it would be well suited to having like a daycare there. You could probably use the same existing building. And, you know, it would also be a good use for the park district, if the park district used that. The zoning that, or the development that's currently being proposed would really be better suited to the property that you guys just purchased along Roosevelt. So that's my thoughts about the commercial. In terms of the design that's being proposed, I appreciate the layout in the interest of the developer. However, the setbacks, I believe, are kind of reversed between Harvard and Beloit. You know, if you look at the setbacks along Beloit, they all butt the sidewalk pretty tightly. And then otherwise with, excuse me, on Harvard, they all follow a similar setback down the whole street and they're creating a higher setback compared to the neighbors. Similar on Beloit, it's been acknowledged that they are pretty tight to Beloit versus all the neighbors are all setback. So I believe that there should be some sympathy to what the neighborhood's doing. Also, when you do go around, it's all two stories. There's no three stories. There's one three story all the way on the other side of the school on Beloit, but otherwise the community is really a two story community. So I don't think the development as currently considered is really sympathetic to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
My name is Iris McCormick. I'm C-C-O-R-M-I-C-K. I live at 940 South Lathrop. I've been a homeowner there for about 30 years. And I don't think this is a good idea. I think it's way overloaded. We don't need that many. And I know you said you heard that, but there's just not enough space. And then what happens when they don't sell, when you put these high prices on there because 700,000 down the street is for sale? It didn't sell yet. It could be put on the market. I was in real estate for 30 years. I work with big developers downtown. But if it doesn't sell, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna rent it? Is it gonna go Section 8? Because it could. And the developer and architect don't live here. So they're gonna be on their way and we're gonna be stuck again with Section 8 housing if they don't sell. We don't need that many townhomes. We do not need them there. Ed's Way's closed. Okay, move on. It's not gonna open, people. We're probably not gonna have a commercial business there, but we don't need 20 townhomes. We don't need that. People will move here from the city. They'll come to the city because they think we've got a great place to live. And when they get here, on my block alone, they say, why did I come here? So I'm there 30 years and I go, wow, it used to be nice, but it's not anymore. So I really want you all to take that into consideration, what we're doing. And I agree with everything Erin said. I ditto. That is so true. Lastly, my house still floods. I have some pumps, ejectors. My house still floods. 20 more homes, more water? Oh, don't use the toilet. And if you do, don't flush it while it's raining. Come on, people. We gotta do better. Ed's Way is gone, but we don't need 20 homes there. That's greed. That's greed. I'm done.
Thank you. And for the record, it's 10. It's 10 homes.
10, 20.
Yeah. Thank you.
Debbie King, K-I-N-G, 836 Beloit. Yes, David is my brother, but I'm speaking as me and everyone will tell you that. Full disclosure, Carrie's my neighbor. I've lived in Forest Park over 35 years. I bought two flat, 836 Beloit, 19 years ago. My block has drastically changed in the past 19 years. In fact, the first night I lived on that block, the house at 816 Beloit burnt down. All I listened to was fire trucks and I kind of wondered where I moved to. I later learned that the house, five houses down from me was a drug house and they were selling drugs in the alley. Thankfully, that's gone and that young entrepreneur is in prison. So over the course of 19 years, I've watched the houses to the north of me, to the south of me, across the street. Four of them, north of me on the block, across the alley, two of them, two ways across the alley. They've all been redeveloped and sold by flippers for a lot of money, significantly more than I ever thought any of them would sell for. The most recent ones look like they belong in the city, the houses. They are not brick. They are not even remotely brick. They look very much like this townhouse development style. They're a city style. They're being bought by people from the city, dual income that are spending $5,000, $6,000, $700,000 on small homes. But that's what they're spending. It's less money than they would spend in the city. The one thing that I've found that's been great about all these redevelopments is I now know all my neighbors. I didn't know my neighbors before this started to happen. I didn't even know Carrie's name. She was Sally's, Sally's owner. Sally was the dog. That's all I knew. But we've become more of a community on our block, much more of a community. And this is hard for me personally. I'm absolutely somebody that runs to Ed's Way for a package of hamburger buns or a head of lettuce. But Ed's Way isn't gonna survive off of me doing that. I don't do my weekly grocery shopping at Ed's Way. And they know that. They know that's not how we shop these days. We all have cars. We all have only a certain amount of money to spend and we go to the bigger box stores because we can get more bang for our buck. Let's face it, Ed's Way has to pay more for product than those places do. Kind of lost my train of thought.
You've got about 30 seconds.
Okay. So this past April, I started walking for exercise. One of the places I walked to was Living Fresh. Crossed Roosevelt Road, went over to the stoplight. It's a beautiful store, by the way. Completely redone. We can still walk to a grocery store. Yes, we're gonna have to cross Roosevelt Road if we want to walk there, but we can still walk to a grocery store. And that's our reality. You know, I don't think, personally don't think anything wrong with townhouses. I know they're gonna sell for a lot of money. I know they will sell to dual income people. They will not tax the school system. Chances are, they will not. Chances are, they will not have children in the school system.
Your time's up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You've already spoken, right?
Yeah, I did. I had more to thought of.
Let me want to make sure we hear from people we haven't heard from at all first.
Okay, all right.
Hi. My name is Joe Burns, B-Y-R-N-E-S. I live at 946 Thomas in Forest Park. First of all, let me say that Ed's Way, for years, has employed a lot of the kids in town, has helped those kids pay for their school, their high school, their college, and helped their families out. Ed's a great guy. You know, we shouldn't punish him by what's going on here. He needs to sell his property, and if he doesn't do it with this project, he's got to wait for the next project. Either way, he's going to be closed, so you're still going to have to go someplace else to shop. My second thing is I agree with number three on Mrs. Plontik, or whatever her name was. About 14 or 15 things that she had to say. I think it was number three. But the other thing that I'd like to say is maybe the village and the developers should be working on that alley if we're going to have 20 cars going into that alley every day or every night parking. They should work on that alley to make sure that it's drainable. I don't know, I didn't see the thing if you had any sewers in the driveway, if you have a sewer in there. And then permeable pavers would be good, but if you had a sewer that connects to the alley, then we have to look at the alley to make sure that that alley drains properly so that people across the alley don't get flooded again. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Please, your name and your address.
Sure. Jen Sippel, J-E-N-N, S-I-P-P-E-L, and 815 Marengo. I really just wanted to make a comment that, not anti-development, but I think this iteration of what was presented is not really, it's not really enhancing the street or the community. It's a very, it doesn't fit in. It's already been mentioned before, but it just doesn't fit in. It's not really where I think the community should go, and I think part of it is Forest Park not having kind of a plan or even an aesthetic that they ascribe to, and there's just buildings going up that don't represent, again, the neighbors around it. And I think that maybe this isn't an issue for today, but I think that definitely there needs to be some conversation about creating some vision perhaps for future development of the village so that when developers come and present, we at least have something that we can look at and answer for ourselves whether what they're suggesting is actually enhancing, improving the area for current and future residents of the town. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Scott Sanders from 313 Burkhart Court here in Forest Park. I've been in Forest Park for eight years, previously on Marengo and now on Burkhart. I actually built and live in one of the townhouses on Burkhart Court, which was in this room, I think, four years ago now. So I'm sorry, I'm a dirty developer and builder. But I want to advocate for redevelopment and density in the community. I don't think that we're going to get away from some sort of redevelopment with more dense housing on this particular site. I'm not one to judge if this is the right use of this site for intensity, but I just want to defend the development team and the architect a little bit because they're not going to stand up here and say that that letter that was read has a lot of unsubstantiated points and a lot of things that don't make sense in it. Some of the other public comment that I've seen on Facebook is the same thing. The city, the developer can't dictate what really goes on a property and what the market is willing to buy and support. And so no matter how much we want redevelopment on the commercial sense of that property or how much we want another grocery store to reopen there, if it doesn't work and the community doesn't demand it by paying for it, basically, it's not going to happen. So I think that the redevelopment here is probably a best use in the situation based on sales price and the economics and the area, and that residential is most likely what's going to wind up there. It's just how do we come about getting to that point? That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. You have 30 seconds.
Sorry to add on. I do appreciate the interest of Ed's Way. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge was the curb cut on Beloit, I believe, is a safety issue since they don't have that setback, that there would be kind of a visibility issue for pedestrians that walk down that sidewalk with that curb cut being added to the sidewalk there.
Are you talking about the curb cut to the parking lot?
Yeah, the curb cut to the parking lot facing the school with minimal setback from the street there.
I just want to say I don't believe there's a curb cut, going to be a curb cut there. There is one now, and it was gone.
Was your curb cut going to be on Beloit or on Harvard?
The alley, Al.
Oh, so they would only access through the alley?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions? I'm sorry? John?
Last is a question.
Just.
Wanted a final comment.
That's fine. Any other questions from the --
Just one question for staff. What is the minimum lot size?
For what?
I think most people might be surprised to learn that it's technically 50 feet, even though there are barely any single-family homes that meet that, and they are more typically 25 feet. That's something we're planning to address in the rewrite of the code, but it is 50 feet.
Thank you.
There's one other thing I wanted to provide for your information as a fact. Multifamily, single-family, those are land uses. Condo, apartment, those are types of ownership. The type of ownership is not the purview of this commission or any land use decision. So that's important for you guys to know and happy to share it with the broader audience.
As I said at the beginning, we're guided by the zoning, and we're guided by the comprehensive plan. And for those of you, if you haven't seen the comprehensive plan, look at it, be sure to read it. It gives direction about where Forest Park is to go. John, did you want to?
Yes. I think I've been at this podium enough to where most of you know I don't rebut public testimony, but in this case, I'd like to change that. You know, the 13 points from this person, they were, it was loaded with emotional language, unsubstantiated facts, things that I know to be true about the developer were put out there as if they were facts. I did a little of the research. I can tell you, we have a 10-year relationship, and we've done three developments together, all successful. I can submit that as evidence. But things like blight and noise, you know, disastrous for students, rat problems, yeah, a rat problem would more than likely happen, but the village requires a rodent control because there are, in fact, a series of rats. If you live nearby, that just comes with the territory. But the one that I thought was most egregious was the lady who stepped up and kept calling it a 20-townhomes development. Now, that's just a, you know, a misunderstanding. It is a 10. But I'm very sensitive to dog whistles about Section 8 housing. I don't think that's fair. It's not accurate. It's not in any plan, and I think that Forest Park deserves better. Thank you.
All right, commissioners. There are two phases to voting here. The first is about the zoning. And, or amendment to the zoning, and then the second is about the project. And obviously, if the first doesn't pass, the second can't go for it. Okay?
I'll read the first motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony provided, I would admit the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a village council approval of amending the Forest Park zoning map to change the zoning of 946 Beloit from V1 slash Neighborhood Shopping District to R3 High Density Residential District. So.
Is there a second?
Say.
Roll call.
Kevin Hibberts.
No.
Ryan Russ.
Yes.
Carrie McBride. Yes. Scott Whitebo.
Yes.
Paul Price.
Yes.
Marsha East.
Yes. Motion carries? So now we move to the second part of this, which is about this particular project. I'd like to propose some friendly amendments to make sure that we get the very best out of this that we possibly can. And I'll just name off some of the things that struck me as, I think, wins for everybody. One is the permeable drive in between.
Yes.
The second is the, going back to, because you do have a school across the street, I don't know how you enforce this with the Amazons and the FedEx drivers, but if deliveries couldn't happen during school, drop off and pick up. But I realize that is really hard to enforce.
Well, they mentioned a designated Amazon parking spot.
Yeah. I just don't, but I don't want to make the alley worse.
Or it could be on Harvard. Harvard Street. That might be the solution.
Then that might be a better way to do it.
Yeah.
And then I think the third that I think is worth looking at is the idea that was brought up of moving the whole property a little east, but I realize I don't want to go that too far, and I don't, and I'm not an architect or an engineer to understand what that means, but I do think there's something that is worth investigating there.
Do we have something that talks about visual or curb appeal, or do we have the ability to talk about that as far as? Okay.
That was, yeah, I had that as well, some material.
I mean, I will say, under site plan approval, you have broader authority than other types of processes. I don't know if there is a particular exhibit that will help, though, but think about the height and the setback. I think there, I heard sort of two issues. One is, is it going to feel overbearing? And two is, is looking at the side of the development appropriate?
Mm-hmm.
So happy to answer questions or guide, help guide this conversation.
True. I'm just going to be blunt, and I'm going to say it nicer than Scott is, trees aren't going to block how ugly this thing is. The material needs to be changed. It's just awful. So I don't know if that's a site plan condition or what, but it needs to fit in more with this neighborhood, and that cement siding is, just doesn't jibe on the street, just doesn't jibe where it is, and planting beautiful trees aren't going to help.
I live in a fiber cement home, and I love it. So you know.
I lived in a fiber cement home in Oak Park and -- Everything is site context. -- upkeep on it, maybe because it was incorrectly installed, made me crazy.
See, now, I have site fiber cement siding. I'll just throw that out there. It's, but it's siding, not.
Well, I think that's where we're getting into aesthetics, and I don't think, I don't think that's our purview.
My opinion is that it's not in keeping with the character of that corner. That's what I meant to say, but I said it more bluntly.
Remember, we're guided by the variance, the zoning, which we've now changed, and we're guided by what goes against or with the comprehensive plan.
It's.
We're also planning.
Mm-hmm.
We're also planning.
I think the balance you want to find is if, for example, you said a condition is the buildings must be all brick. That's getting a little dicey in terms of the level of review for other projects. So it's helpful to think about your own home. It's also helpful to think about the specific context because character and context can be considered here. So I'm not trying to be obtuse, but there's not a black and white answer. I just think as you get more prescriptive on things like building materials, there's a chance we could get ourselves into trouble.
The other option I think is we could do a continuance and see what John and the developer might come up with.
Either that or you could direct staff to do the same thing with some parameters. Let's say we're given specific areas to explore, and if we can't get there, coming back or something like that. But if you say like, well, the bricks must be all building, the building must be all brick, hey, staff and applicant, go work it out.
Can we say more in keeping with the general nature of the neighborhood?
Mm-hmm. You guys just have to have the level of comfort of what the materials, what that might mean.
Like, there's a lot of wood in our neighborhood.
Lot of wood. The next-door neighbor has vinyl siding.
The one next to that is sided.
Right. Across the street is stone. Across the street is brick. To the catty corner of it is stone and brick. So, yeah, I mean, it is a little dicey, but it does, yeah, I don't, maybe I'm.
The staff go work with, who will be working on it?
The applicant. Developer.
The developer to modify.
Explore.
Explore. Explore options for making the facade.
Mm-hmm.
Blend or be more in keeping with the neighborhood?
In terms of scale, style, and character?
More in the style and character of the neighborhood.
It's hard to measure. It's.
I said more. I didn't say.
Right.
Character of the neighborhood. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's for you guys to decide. Just want to bring up a couple of points, right? There are communities that have, and you guys have heard me say this before, architectural review committees where there are design guidelines or design requirements. Oak Park is one. We do not have anything like that, so it is a gray issue. I would just keep thinking about, so there's a neighbor with vinyl siding. Some people might say they don't like vinyl siding, or it's not as nice as brick, right? I'm just putting out hypotheticals, but we can't just sort of pick and choose, like, well, for now, it's no fiber cement, and then someone else has vinyl siding. Do you see the?
But if we're exploring or asking the staff to explore, what might be able to?
To me, that's very comfortable because we might come to an agreement with them where some of the accents are brick, or I don't even know, so I don't want to commit to anything.
Yeah.
I just want those of you voting to be comfortable with those parameters.
All right. So I've written that forward. The staff will.
Work with the applicant.
Work with the applicant.
Can I make a rap? Given how important this topic is to the community, I actually, my preference would be a continuance so they can see what is happening.
Yep.
Meaning the applicant would come back with a different set of drawings, a couple of ideas. This is what it's going to look like so the public can see it. Otherwise, they won't be able to. Unless I'm mistaken.
Well, it has to go to village council, right?
We're not the final deciding body.
But we did that with the pines replacement, too. Had them come back with some different options. Had them come back with some different options. And, and at least it was public. At least people got to comment on it and have some.
We can continue the case to a date certain. So I guess the question goes to the petitioner. Would you like to make a representation to address the issues, these three or four issues that were brought up?
I do have one motion.
At the February meeting? We won't, we won't be bound by publication requirements.
I understand. I think we discussed it with my client as you were debating. I don't see the advantage of that. I do, we normally can work with staff, and it's not a final vote. It's not a zoning, you know, petition. We're actually on the variance part of it, not, not the rezone. So I think we can get the same, we can come to the same place, but to add another 30 days to the, or 15 days, I don't see that that's useful. And I think my client concurs.
The expressed concerns here would be passed on to the Village Council, then.
So it bypasses? Because we're an advising body, anyway. We don't make the final decision.
Again, I, you know, putting this on staff is, it's a heavy lift. And you're expressing faith in us and the ultimate voting council there. So it's up to you guys.
Because, let me just ask, so if it came back, it would go to the council, and they would have to, John and company would do another presentation there?
No, it would go right to the February meeting.
To our February meeting. So if we extended it, go to our February meeting, and we, they could bring more stuff, more if they wanted to, or.
But they don't want to do that, so it's gonna go to the council for approval.
If we let them.
Yeah, right. We have.
That's, that's a thing.
The petitioner can request a continuance. You guys can propose a continuance. The term "date certain" means everyone in the room would know that it's Feb, whatever, the second Monday in February, third Monday in February. So there's not, you don't have to replicate the notice process. They would come back, you guys would hear it and decide what to do. Otherwise, you can vote yes to send it to council, you can vote it down, and it doesn't go anywhere, or you can request the, or propose the continuance.
Well, I'm gonna propose the continuance in that the issues that we have discussed are brought forward.
The issues that you.
Was the, ranging, well, the permeable drive in between, the parking for, for drop-off and deliveries, particularly during school drop-off pickup times, the, and moving, shifting the property towards the alley. What does that mean, the east alley? Trying not to, because I don't know how, how far you can shift it without.
An exploration of shifting it to the east. I think also we need to explore signage for visitor parking, which will be increased during school hours. May not be part of this project at all, but.
None.
There's no Ed's Way visitors parking currently.
For the other streets, for all the.
During school, without visitors.
Yeah, I'm not, that, I'm not concerned about. I'm not, I'm not concerned with that.
At the drainage, shifting the property and.
Deliveries.
And delivery, some kind of delivery.
And, and pushing the development potentially.
And what was the last one?
Pushing the development eastward potentially.
Yeah.
On the property.
Yeah. Steve, before we do the delivery thing, do we have control, or can we influence in any way the traffic pattern?
Microphone, please.
Microphone, people can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With regard to delivery parking, can we require parking only on the Harvard side? Or limited parking on the Beloit side? Would that be something we could get to?
Happy to call Jeff Bezos, but I doubt it. It's really, I mean, those guys, they, they double park, they park pretty much wherever they're closest to the address, so.
But, and, and, I'm sorry.
And there's not an ordinance that we could, I mean, there's not an ordinance that could be enforced to prevent that parking?
We can always put signs up.
That, that's what I was gonna say, we could put a sign.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, we can absolutely put a sign on Harvard, delivery space only, or something.
Right, are we, is this the final list? Because this is, this is radically different from design changes, and I.
No, it's.
Well, no, because we started with design changes, and then we, we were gonna go to drainage for sure.
Well, I think these are items that we could probably make a decision on tonight. I mean, do you want to recess to meet with your?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
I think we'd all prefer to have.
The other, yes, let's have a recess.
Have a recess. How much time do you need? Just a moment. 10 minutes.
All right.
Thank you for the recess. It gave us time to consult on the four conditions, as I understand them, and we would accept those conditions. Our pledge is to work immediately with staff on all of those. Obviously, the pavers, I'd have to reach out to our engineering company, get them plugged in. All the others seem to be on our shoulders as architects, and that's where the pledge comes in, to get that squared up with staff prior to going to Village Board. We're trying to avoid another step here. I think via your comments, you've made it abundantly clear to Village Board of what your recommendations are. Those would be on the record, so when we come to them with new drawings, we could say before, after, before, after. So with, so that's our respectful request, that the vote move forward with those conditions.
So just for clarity, the permeable pavers in the.
Yes.
Driveway.
In the drive aisle.
Parking options for deliveries.
Correct.
Looking at perhaps, exploring the possibility, moving the property back to the east alley, and then also, you're also looking at your exterior, your facade, your building materials.
Correct.
Plus exterior materials.
Well, I think that goes hand in hand, exploring. We're gonna take a deeper look at the neighborhood for compatibility, since that's where that comments, comment comes from, you know, compatibility.
So work with staff on permeable pavers. I'm gonna call it a front, a greater.
Microphone.
Sorry. Work with staff on permeable pavers. Would it be, if you're pushing it back, would it be more of a front setback?
Yeah, increasing the front setback and reducing the rear setback to some degree.
Increasing front setback, decreasing rear setback. We would have to. We have a specific, just, just as an aside, we have a specific approval for a reduction in front yard setback from 18.6 to 10 feet, and a reduction in the rear yard setback from 25 to 9.6, which we would have to somehow modify those.
That's correct.
They would have to work with staff.
Work with staff to come to, or, can we do that? Not really. When you're talking specific numbers, there's not the same kind of discretion, because it will get recorded as an ordinance. So it can't, we can't have an ordinance that says, oh, we reduced it to this.
So it needs to come back.
Yeah, anything with like a number would have to be specific. I just would encourage you to have more discussion about what an increased front yard setback gets you.
We could come up with a number specific today.
I think we have to have a number today, if we want a number, if we want to change it from the numbers that are in the document.
In order to go to Village Council, yes.
Yeah, we have to have a specific number. Is.
I guess, let me clarify, there's two issues, right? There's the setback, just on its own.
Right.
And then there's what people are looking at.
I understand. I'm talking about the pushing the building back, is what I'm talking about.
So for example, let's say there was a development, there's a lot of people talking, it's hard to hear.
Yeah, if we could stay focused on the meeting, thank you.
Thanks. Let's say there was any other kind of development proposed, could be a single-family home, and it was the, the front yard in a way we all think of it. Would we still apply this request to it? So let's say you had a single-family home fronting Beloit, and they were requesting a 10-foot setback, and the neighboring homes are 13, 15, 18. So is it, is that the issue on its own? The amount of the setback versus what you're looking at from the setback?
In my opinion, honestly, any setback, which is what we would have with a nine, a 10-foot setback, is more setback than we've got with ads.
That's a fact. It's zero, it's zero feet with ads.
It's going from zero to 10.
Yep.
This building's also going from one story to three.
Well, that's true.
So I, I think we should look at getting Harvard as much setback as we can. I don't know if.
Harvard or Beloit?
Beloit, excuse me, thank you. My opinion is we, we should push it back. Give the, if we can, and I think you have to study whether or not you can get the in-and-outs turning radiuses to work at the alley side, but if we can make that five feet, that would give four foot six back to Beloit, make it 14.
To 4.6.
To 4.6. Or four feet, I'm sorry, it's four.
Four feet, six inches.
Sorry. Here's just comparing it to the requirement versus what.
Right.
Yeah, what people might.
It's a comparison which has to read, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I've got the number, I just want to make sure if I have to read it, I've got the number right. And it would not change the lot coverage?
No.
Okay. And not lottery per unit. It just, it's just better to make sure we've got the numbers right if I have to read it, and it's what we're gonna vote on. And so we're working with staff on permeable pavers. We don't have to, we're going to agree on the front, I'm gonna call it the front setback, on the additional setback and reduction in the back, but we're, you're still gonna work with staff on permeable pavers, parking for deliveries, and.
Facade for, I think the wording, somebody came up with the wording already and said.
Scale, style, character of the overall neighborhood.
Said, work with staff, bear with me a second. Yes. Work with staff to explore options for facade that is more in keeping with the character of the existing neighborhood.
I had that, and then I deleted it. Oh, wait. To explore options for facade.
That is more in keeping with the character of the existing neighborhood.
All right, so, again, I have work with staff on permeable pavers, parking for deliveries, identified parking for deliveries?
On, on Harvard.
Anyway, parking for deliveries, and work with staff to explore options for the, for the facade that are more in keeping with the existing neighborhood.
Correct.
Are we good?
Have I captured it all?
Are we as good as we're getting? All right.
I'm gonna move, and try to read.
Based on the submitted petition and testimony provided, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Village Council approval of the site plan associated with PZC 2024-01, subject to the following conditions. One, the site shall be constructed in substantial compliance with the project documents identified in this report and available in the Department of Public Health and Safety. Two, all construction shall comply with the building code of the Village of Forest Park with final plans subject to review and approval by the Village Engineer and Director of Public Health and Safety. Three, no building permits and no certificate of occupancy for the subject property shall be issued by the Department of Public Health and Safety to the owner unless all debts owed to the Village of Forest Park by the owner have been paid in full prior to the issuance of such permits or certificate. Four, the final covenants, conditions, and restrictions governing the development are subject to review and approval by the Village Attorney and Director of Public Health and Safety. Five, the covenants, conditions, and restrictions governing the development and plan of survey shall be recorded at or before issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Six, unit address numbering is subject to approval by the Director of Public Health and Safety. Seven, the curb cut on Beloit Avenue shall be closed and the sidewalk repaired reinstated at applicant's expense. Eight, the final landscaping plan and driveway material are subject to review and approval by the Director of Public Health and Safety. Nine, the applicant shall provide additional information on mailbox locations and type, mailbox locations and type and delivery management. Ten, the applicant shall work with staff on permeable paver, permeable pavers, parking for deliveries, and to explore options for the facade that are more in keeping with the existing neighborhood. Eleven, any municipal, any, I'm sorry, 11, any violation of the above.
You missed the east, moving the building, the property. Did she say that?
That's gonna be in the.
No, I won't say that yet.
Okay.
Sorry. 11. Any violation of the above conditions will result in a violation of the municipal code of the Village of Forest Park, and the owner may be subject to fines for each day said violation exists. Based on the submitted petition and testimony provided, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission, is this supposed to be two separate? Can this be part of this one, or is that supposed to be separate?
No, it's the same.
Okay. Because I did it together the last time. Based on submitted petition and testimony provided, a further move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Village Council approval of the requested variations. A reduction in front yard setback from 18.18 feet, six inches, to 15 feet, a reduction in rear yard setback from 25 feet to four feet, six inches, an increase in the maximum lot coverage from 40% to 47%, and a reduction in lot area per unit from 2,000 square feet to 1,556 square feet. The variations are recommended without conditions acknowledging that the conditions placed on the site plan remain in effect. So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Roll call?
I'm, I'm there, hold on. Votes two and three. Kevin Hibberts? Ryan Russ?
Yes.
Carrie McBride? Yes. Scott Whitebone?
Yes.
Paul Price?
Yes.
Marcia East?
Yes.
And let it just be noted that I've not mentioned Sarah Maloney, because while she is technically still a member of the committee, or of the board, she is not, no longer a committed member. She's still on my list. Steve, she's still on my list. All right. It passed, five to one.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing of PZC 2024-01?
Close.
I made the motion.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Mother of God.